Yeah. My uncle was kind of just outside of here, he was uh, they had a, yeah, they had a mobile home.
He does, um, they have a very good.
That's fine.
It was good to be there.
She doesn't have a phone.
You're not so careful.
It's not, it's not the worst.
I mean, I think that's, it's, it's so far, so many things that can go on during the, uh, the, yeah, so, I'm, well, I'm.
Yeah, I couldn't afford to see so much.
Yeah, I call them, please let your message remain in the.
Good to see you, because it's.
If we just have a meeting, you and Charles.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's David?
Uh, he needs to go around, he doesn't live here, he's live, you know, in town, just outside.
Oh, did I get it right?
Right, right, yeah, I understand. No, I'm looking at the chat, just like. So, yeah. Interesting. And you had been there, Dave had a question, he was so far off the question, where we had everything. It wasn't your main, to what do you use about? I know, he's so short about David, he knows the Constitution.
I like the way he's, he's.
He's studying.
I like that he's.
He has this.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Still fits for now, we'll see next year.
It's just starting with a color code.
You guys.
See, I never met you, I like you.
Wow.
I've been thirty-one years old, yeah.
Sure. Did you see him? I'm from the address.
Yeah. I already did.
I mean, yeah.
You know, I know, it's been a long, I like to see.
Oh, yeah.
Never better. Houseful of them.
Yeah. Nakers is.
I'll figure out why, I need some more, because I was calling him back, I thought, I should, I should.
I don't know.
I was gonna ask you. I hear you.
I don't know why anyone would do this, nobody just love, but I, Colleen makes me feel all these fun, but you know.
I know, right?
People are always doing rocks at you, it's like, you know, he's happy, it's like, who does this?
No.
Just kind of, like, you said, contribution.
Jared, how are you?
Hey.
Good to see you, buddy.
They might take a break.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so good to see you.
She like, oh, no, she's, oh, no, please, you're, you know, it's, it cannot, I mean, I, I.
Far as disappointment when, when this came up, I, I saw it on social media like I'm sure a lot of other people did and it just spoke to me. It, it spoke to me to throw my name in the hat and see if there was anything I could do to contribute, make a difference, and hopefully, you know, play a small part in the making Oakdale, keeping Oakdale great and kind of getting to see the inner workings of it. And this town has about doubled in size from when I moved here thirty-three years ago, but it still has that same small-town feel. I, I enjoy the fact that if I can go to a, a community event or a grocery store or, you know, even, even just on a, you know, walk down the street and, you know, get honked at, it's, you know, it's pretty neat to, you know, be recognized and, again, when this came up, it was just, it, I wish I had a definitive answer for why I'm up here. It just, it, it called to me and I feel I have some assets that could help and if I can, I'd love to and that's really all I have.
Good. Thank you. All right. So now we're going to have some questions from the city council. What are your thoughts on a council member's responsibilities?
I think that the primary responsibility is, is to, you know, the, the city's, you know, mission and, and values. It's, and it's also to, it's also to the people. And, and I believe that that's all people regardless of whether or not you agree with, you know, with what they're saying or not. It's, it's important to, it's important to listen to all sides. I believe that having opposing views is where conversation really happens and, you know, if, if selected, I like to play a part in that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilbert?
Please tell me what you know about the city's budget. Do you know what the current general reserve level is? And what do you think is a good reserve level the city should maintain?
To, to be honest, I, I, I don't know any of those. I'd love to dive in and learn, but speaking as of today, I, I don't, I don't know and I'm not going to pretend that I do.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kettering?
Please describe your community service activities.
Sure. My mom, Karen Bassi, shuttered a nonprofit called The Wave of Hope. It was for individuals suffering from MS. And from about two thousand eight until two thousand twenty, she, I think she officially closed it in two thousand twenty-three, but around the pandemic was around the time that events for that really kind of stopped. And during that time, I used to, I would volunteer for a little bit of everything. I, I've done everything from taking meeting minutes to sitting in meetings, giving people that have hard time getting around rides. I've also assisted with doing things like landscape around people's homes, dropping off air conditioners, walkers. They used to do an annual golf tournament, Oakdale Golf and Country Club. I would help set it up, tear it down. And then the Walk MS Event in Modesto yearly, they had, they had their spot there and I would assist with whatever, basically whatever was needed. I was just essentially, I was the yes man.
Thank you. Councilmember Patassie?
Do you have any relationship or business with any city, city council members? If so, would that relationship influence your voting if chosen?
With Oakdale being a small town, I have individual relationships with a few different council members. I, no, no direct business affiliation and absolutely not. I'm, I'm absolutely my own person.
Hold on, hold on. I want your, I want your answer to be heard.
No, no problem. I, anybody who knows me knows I'm very much my own person and so I'm not very easily influenced by others.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to add today?
Uh, no, just, just appreciative of the, of the opportunity and, you know, I hope whoever is filled, you know, whoever you guys decide to fill the seat that, you know, they do a good job representing the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. John Clark is next. John Clark, thank you.
We've all been there sometime. We've all been there. You're good.
Oh, yeah. Please side up your phones. We've all had it happen. Yeah. We've all had it happen. Oh, yeah. Truly that. Good evening.
Good evening.
You're going to have three minutes to provide your presentation. The timer will be set when the red light blinks. We'll go ahead and start asking you some questions.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you for having me. My name is John Clark. I've been a resident of Oakdale for fifty years, which is my whole life. But my roots in Oakdale go much deeper than that. My mom is a Kaufman. The Kaufmans have been in Oakdale for many generations. My mother's great-grandfather started a Pacific Pea Packing Company, which is now what we know as Conagra. So, and I was just informed tonight that my great-grandmother, Edith Kaufman, actually owned this building and it was a church. So, yeah, I, I thought that was kind of, kind of neat. My wife is also a big part of the community. She's been a teacher at Magnolia Elementary. This is her twentieth year. So she's, like I said, she's also a big part of the community. We're raising our daughter here. She's a junior at Oakdale High School. She's a three-sport varsity athlete her sophomore year. And I, I say that not only to brag about my daughter because I love to do that, but I think a big part of why she's into athletics so much is because of the youth leagues that she played in through Oakdale sports, softball, basketball. And I got to coach her in those youth leagues and it was a great experience. So the reason I want to be a member of the city council is I'd like to represent the people of our community. That, to me, that means all people, no matter their, their race, their religion, their gender, their orientation. I, I think that all of their views need to be heard and taken into account when the council makes their, their decisions. And also would like to keep Oakdale great, make it even greater than it already is. I believe I'd be an excellent council member because I value the history of Oakdale. It's been a big part of my life, like I said. But I also like to look at the future and I'd like to see Oakdale just continue to grow and keep going as well as the history. I'm also very open-minded to all people's points of views, which I think is an excellent quality to have in making decisions that would affect the people of this community. And I would just be very proud to serve on the Oakdale City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So what are your thoughts on what a council member's responsibilities are?
Pardon?
What are your thoughts, sorry, on what a council member's responsibilities are?
Well, my thoughts are it's a very difficult job. You have to take several points of view and you have to make the best decision for the community. And, you know, my, one of my bosses used to always tell me, you're, you're, you know, you're not a taco. You can't make everybody happy. And, and, and you have to take that into consideration that when you make these tough decisions, there's going to be a group of people that not necessarily going to agree with you, but you still have to do what you feel is best for the, the community.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Gilbert?
Please tell me what you know about the city's budget. Do you know what the current general reserve level is? And what do you think is a good reserve level the city should maintain?
Wow. That is something that I did not research.
I know. Jared gave me the hardest question. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry to say that I, I can't answer.
That's okay. All right. Councilmember Kettering?
Well, good. He gave me the softball question. So please describe your community service activities.
Well, mostly my community services activities revolved around my daughter as she was growing up, coaching her youth softball teams, her youth basketball teams. And, you know, really just, that's really the extent of it, you know. But I can say that I absolutely love this community. I've been here for fifty years and, you know, I, I want to do more for it, which is another reason why I'd like to be on the city council.
Thank you. Councilmember Patassie?
Do you have any relationships or business with any sitting city council members? If so, would that relationship influence your voting if chosen?
I do not. I, I know a few of you, but other than that, no, no relationship whatsoever.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to add this evening?
No, I, I think that that's about it. I just, you know, just the, hopefully that, you know, I, I could be sitting alongside of you and helping make this city even better than it already is.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate you.
All right. Mary Buchanan is up next.
Good evening.
So you all have three minutes to provide your presentation. Timer will be set. And once you reach your time limit, the red light on the podium will blink and then we will go to some questions from us.
Okay.
All right. You're up.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, fellow candidates, and those who took the time to participate in this process. I'm Mary Buchanan. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to share with you why I should be the candidate to fill your city council vacancy. I submitted my package for the position because I'm confident my dedication, availability, and real-world experience is what you need. I'm qualified for this job. My seventeen years as a board member of a very large nonprofit, combined with twenty-five years as a successful sales executive selling complex information technology solutions to local government customers is a great foundation. I earned the trusted advisor relationship I had with my customers by being integrity-driven, accountable, committed in my actions, and by making sure to include every stakeholder's input when proposing a solution. The methodologies and attention to detail served me well then and it will be used moving forward. Two thousand sixteen, I was able to retire from my sales career and do something different. I moved to Oakdale, falling in love with its charm and its affordability. I immediately began volunteering and for eight years, I managed the Astro Foundation's thrift shop here in town. I enjoyed meeting and getting to know a lot of our community, fellow merchants, and interacting with local government. I was also nominated for Volunteer of the Year in two thousand and twenty-one. I continue to volunteer today. I think it is a great idea and it makes perfectly good sense to have, find a way to give back to the, to the community if you can. Joining the city council is the next step in my journey and it's the reason that I'm standing here today. This job is a commitment. It's a commitment to represent our constituents. I'll encourage them to engage and provide input so we can represent their diverse needs and ideas. I also realize this job is to ensure our decisions and policies align with the strategic and financial goals we've set for our city. Being transparent in our process, no matter the outcome, is a necessity. The city of Oakdale, cowboy capital of the world, special and unique, I'm inspired by this leadership, motivated, motivated by a desire to help our city be an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. For me, it'll be time well spent. Because I'm retired, I'll devote the time to focus my efforts on ramping quickly and throughout my service. My pledge to you is that I'll put in the work to earn your trust and become a valued member of your team. I'll serve with unbiased passion for the right reasons. With your vote for my appointment, you can be assured I'll be well-prepared for every meeting. I'll listen and respectfully collaborate to make decisions that represent the best interests of our constituents and the future of our city. It would be an honor to join your team in representing the cowboy capital of the world. My name's Mary Buchanan and I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you, Mary. All right. So now you have questions from us. What are your thoughts on a council member's responsibilities?
Well, I think a council member's first responsibility is representing the constituents in our community for sure. Their responsibilities are to set policy, make sure that the decisions that we make are transparent in all the, in all the process that we have, we go through, set the tax rates, be able to collaborate respectfully and, you know, make disciplined and, you know, definitely principled, what's the word I'm looking for, compromise and, and make sure that the decisions that we make are truly ones that were, benefit the future of our city.
Thank you. All right. Next, councilmember Gilbert?
Please tell me what you know about the city's budget. Do you know what the current general reserve level is? And what do you think is a good reserve level the city should maintain?
Well, I think that the, the current reserve level, if I recall, is about six million dollars. And we've got a forty percent, you know, what is it, a forty percent debt reserve that the city has, which is, I think is phenomenal compared to other cities, surrounding cities for sure. So I think that what I, what I have read and what I feel is that this city has done an excellent job in being financially, financially responsible and physically responsible. So I guess that's my answer. I mean, that really is how I feel, what I, what I've seen.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettering?
Be proud of it.
Please describe your community service activities.
Well, let's see. I served as, like I say, as a manager of the Astro Foundation for eight years. I volunteered in a number of different ways, from city cleanup to activities. Love Oakdale, been a participant as well as, as a leader, a team leader. I have done, I'm signed up currently to be part of the ice skating rink that's coming up, being a part of the ticket booth people. Let's see, just a number of things. I've, I've attended a bunch of the community roundups, really just asking and looking for ways that I could continue to volunteer. I have the time to do it and so I think it's just really an important thing to do is to be really actively engaged and involved in your city.
Thank you. Councilmember Patassie?
Do you have any relationship or business with any sitting council members? If so, would that relationship influence your voting if chosen?
No, not necessarily. I mean, I, I know of and I certainly have been acquainted with city council members, but I don't have any particular relationship necessarily now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else that you would like to add this evening?
Just that I'm really excited to be here. I think this is a great process. I think that I would certainly be a great member of your team. I bring a lot of, I think, some really good business sense and a lot of experience to the stable, make some great decisions for our, for our city. So I'd love to be part of your team.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
Next up will be Ashley Hankins.
Good evening.
Good evening. You'll have three minutes to provide your presentation. Timer will be set and once the red light blinks, it'll be finished. Then we're going to bring it back to council and ask you a few questions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. My name is Ashley Hankins and I'm honored to be considered an appointment to the Oakdale City Council. Oakdale's been home for the past seven years and after living across the United States, I can truly say there's something special about this community. This is where I'm proud to raise my family, where neighbors care for one another, faith and service are part of daily life, and people take pride in calling Oakdale home. I want to serve because I believe in giving back to the community that has given so much to my family and me. My life has been shaped by both challenge and service. I grew up as an outwritsk youth. My father struggled with severe mental illness and substance use and my family often relied on food banks and community programs to get by. Those early experiences taught me the importance of compassion, understanding, and creating a community where everyone feels supported and valued. That foundation led me to serve in the United States Army, including assignments at Guantanamo Bay and Fort Leavenworth. My time in uniform taught me discipline, integrity, and leadership, skills that I carry into every part of my life. After my military service, I continued to dedicate myself to helping others. I've worked in behavioral health, volunteered with incarcerated youth to reduce recidivism through creative writing programs, and served in my church's youth ministry. Today, I'm completing my master's of social work degree at the University of Southern California, preparing to serve individuals and families with compassion and practical problem solving. I also serve as the chief financial officer for Real Heroes Outdoors, a newly formed nonprofit that connects disabled veterans, disabled youth to outdoors through meaningful healing experience. This role combines my, excuse me, this role combines my passions for service, leadership, and community, helping others find strength and belonging through connection. I've attended city council meetings, volunteered with Love Oakdale, and participated in parent-teacher committees, all of which have deepened my love for this city. Through these experiences, I've seen the heart of Oakdale, people coming together to serve and uplift one another. If appointed, I will lead with integrity, empathy, and heart. I believe the role of the city council is to represent residents with honesty and transparency, to make thoughtful decisions that reflect Oakdale's values, and to be good stewards of the city's resources and future. Looking ahead, I envision an Oakdale that continues to grow while preserving the close-knit, faith-filled spirit that makes it special. In five years, I hope to see continued investment in our families, youth, seniors, and local businesses. In ten years, I see a thriving Oakdale where opportunity is accessible to all and where kindness and service remain at the core of who we are. I believe one of our city's biggest challenges and opportunities is ensuring that every resident has access, access to the support, that resources they needed, especially when it comes to affordable housing, mental health, and community engagement. With compassion and collaboration, we can meet those needs and continue to build a city where everyone has the chance to thrive. Oakdale is more than a city, it's a family.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on what a council member's responsibilities are?
To be the voice of the community members, to listen with intent and then make precise decisions based on facts and evidence and what the goal of Oakdale's future is and see how both can be appeased, but also understanding that you can't please everyone and that moving forward, you have to make the hard decisions.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilbert?
Please tell me what you know about the city's budget. Do you know what the current general reserve level is? And what do you think is a good reserve level the city should maintain?
I do not know the answer to any of those things, but if I, you know, that's something I can find out. I can ask and I can find those answers. And if I don't know them, I can find them.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettering?
Please describe your community service activities.
Well, depending on where, what we're looking at, from my personal experience, on my unpaid time or paid time?
You decide.
Okay. So I volunteer at my church in many capacities. My, the next thing that I'm going to be volunteering with at our church is a Samaritan's Purse. Hopefully, people are donating those boxes and we are collecting those boxes next week. If anybody wants to pick up a box, you can. What else? I coach my daughter's softball team. I do community pumpkin carving the day before Halloween every year. There's a lot. And I'm an intern. I'm a clinical intern right now in downtown Modesto. That isn't necessarily Oakdale, but we do serve some people in Oakdale.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Patassie?
Do you have, excuse me, do you have any relationship or business with any sitting council members? If so, would that relationship influence the vote if chosen, your vote if chosen?
I do know you. We're both board members on, for Real Heroes Outdoors. And then councilmember Kettering, him and I are, we live in the same neighborhood and we have, you know, conversation at the park every now and then, see each other in the community. I wouldn't say I'm stubborn, but I, I, I'm not easily persuaded, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add this evening?
No, but I just want to say thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up will be Richard Murdock.
Well, hi there.
Hi. So you'll have three minutes to provide your presentation. Colleen will set the timer and once the red light goes off, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to council and ask you some questions.
Awesome. My name's Rich Murdock and I am so grateful to be here tonight. And I want to mention how grateful I am for each one of you. I've been there. I know what it's like to be there and I'm so grateful for the willing, your willingness to serve in this capacity. I'm also grateful for the other seven applicants. I think that's pretty amazing that when Oakdale has a need, that that many people step up. So again, my name's Richard Murdock and I, this is the first time that I've been at this podium. About, I don't know, several years ago, there was a gentleman who resigned his position. Pat Paul was the mayor at the time. She called me and asked if I would come down and apply for this position. I did. And so I went through this impro, this process once before. I was chosen to be on the city council. There was two years left on his term. I served his term and at the end of the term, I was thinking, okay, I'm done and, and nobody ran on, on the next term. So I inherited a fourth term. So I've, I've been on the city council for six years and, and three years ago, when that term ended, then that's when I ended my duration on, on the city council. Some of the things that I think I made a difference on as members of the city council, I'm a general contractor. I built most of the buildings that you're aware of that were new in town. Starbucks or Chase Bank or Bank of Stockton across the street, Little Caesar's. I managed and, and built the costless Medex and, and the old Hershey Visitor Center, Randy Bassi's office, Hobbies. I mean, a lot of buildings in town I've built. And, and I think that I've probably been on the backside of the, of the building counter probably more than, than, than most people. I've learned the people who are there. I appreciate them. I have a good relationship with them. I appreciate them very much. I kind of know how the wheels turn. My family suggested that I come here because I would probably be a pretty quick study, having, had done this, having done this for a few years before. And I just, I'm, I'm available if, if you choose me. I'm grateful to serve. I love the city. Look for, look forward to meeting and getting to know all of you better. And And... One of the things that I remember that we dealt with when I was on the city council is the skate park had just been proposed. And as I looked at those plans, no one had looked at these plans, but that's what I do. Am I done?
Thank you, Rich.
Okay.
All right, so what are your thoughts on what a council member's responsibilities are?
You know, Jared brings a great agenda to the city council meeting and we have plenty of time to digest that. And a good city council member reads it and understands it and maybe even talks to people who know more than they do about it. And then when they come, they're prepared to discuss it and to issue a proper vote. And I was very proud of the fact that I did read everything that was presented to me. And Jared, you sit where I sat because sitting next to Tom Helenan, you know, they were trying to keep me straight. And Tom did a great job of keeping me straight. I own several properties in Oakdale and so sometimes there'd be a conflict. I did have to defer from voting sometimes because I had, you know, something that was of conflict, but Tom kept me in pretty good shape.
Thank you, Rich. All right, councilmember Gilbert?
Please tell me what you know about the city's budget. Do you know what their current general reserve level is? And what do you think is a good reserve level the city should maintain?
We're at 43% right now and that was a long, that was a big stretch. And when Brian Whitemeyer first came here, that was a big problem for the city. Sales tax-wise, we're not generating the sales tax that we used to. And all the decisions that we make cumulatively need to help grow sales tax. We've got Riverbank not far away. Sometime later, we can talk about how car dealerships were changed. It used to be that every time Jeff Steve sold a truck, we got the sales tax. That's no longer the case. Sales tax goes to where the buyer is now. So we need to focus on sales tax. We need to be business-friendly. We need to fill these empty storefronts that you're seeing around town. And so, yeah, 43% is the answer to that question.
Thank you, Rich. All right, councilmember Kettering?
Can you please describe your community service activities?
You bet. I served for six years here. Before that, I served... I was on... The city had a bond allocation committee. Served there for a few years. Loved this city and I served as a scout master for a long time. Loved the youth, loved working with youth. And so, yeah, I'm just kind of wired for service.
Thank you. Councilmember Patassie?
Jeez. Sorry.
And I could probably fix that for you.
I'll electrocute myself, but you fix it. Do you have any relationship or business with any sitting city council members? If so, would that relationship influence your vote if chosen?
You know, the only one of you that I've ever worked before was Cher. I have great respect for Cher. I think Cher knows me better than anybody, but I don't have any relationship with anybody on this council other than Cher. And that was strictly professional. We've never had a personal relationship. Just, I've always appreciated her leadership. And I was the mayor pro tem for two mayors and got to know them then. But no, I don't have any personal relationships with any members of the city.
You used to let me come over and watch movies when we were in high school.
Well, besides that. Besides that.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, Rich, you have anything else you would like to add?
No, but I do want to say how proud I am of the city of Oakdale. And, you know, I've been there and done that. A part of me says, oh, Rich, you've served your term, but I just feel... I feel like this town's been a fabulous place for me to raise five kids and my business has thrived here. And I feel like I owe a lot to this city. And so what I can do, I will.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate you. All right, next up, our last candidate will be Elizabeth Moyle. Good evening, Elizabeth.
Hi.
Hi. So you're going to have three minutes to provide your presentation. The timer will be set. And when the red light blinks, we will go ahead and bring it to city council to ask you a few more questions.
All right, sounds great.
Thanks for being here.
Give me a second, sorry. I can just start whenever?
Yep, you're ready.
Okay. Keep shutting on me, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and fellow communities members. My name is Liz Moyle and I'm honored to be here. At 18, I chose Oakdale. In 2007, I bought my first home on Cloverland Way. In 2011, I brought my baby girl home to Haven Street where we still live today. I'm a single mom to a wonderful and intelligent 14-year-old, Jaden Nicole. For two decades, I've built my life, my career, and my dreams under the Oakdale sky. Life has taught me resilience through fire. When my ex-husband deployed to Afghanistan in 2009, this community surrounded us. Neighbors mowed my lawn, brought meals, checked in. In 2012, when the same marriage turned violent, it was an Oakdale neighbor who stopped my ex-husband from abusing me in front of our home and then encouraged me to finally leave. Oakdale PD rescued me that day. When I couldn't afford groceries, Pastor Kent and Roseae Roberts handed me $80. When Christmas felt impossible, Officer Plath brought Jaden gifts and a $100 gift card that fed us that month. I am a survivor who only survived because of the people around me. I fought incredibly hard to get where I am today and it has not been easy. While raising Jaden on Haven Street, I built a career in operations and technology leadership. I'm a lean Six Sigma Black Belt with years of executive leadership experience and Executive MBA in organizational leadership from CSU Monterey Bay, plus executive certifications from UC Riverside and E. Cornell. I've led multimillion-dollar digital and business transformations, including serving as Lead Program Manager for all operations work streams, building Gallows, South Carolina High Noon Canning Facility, a three-year project that was completed during COVID. These aren't just credentials. They're tools to help our community grow with stability and ethics. I know how to analyze complex problems, build sustainable systems, and lead with integrity. Many in Bridal Ridge know me. Councilmembers, I have a constant calling to give back to this community. I've worked across multiple business areas, manufacturing, technologies, agricultural operations, which means I have solved problems through many different lenses. My strength is communicating across diverse groups with empathy and integrity. I take pride in providing a voice to the common human. I know what it's like to struggle. I've been poor. I've shopped at the dollar store for groceries, watered down milk, just stretched it further for Jaden, and lived off of cucumbers with Italian dressing for meals to stay within budget. I understand the real challenges families in our community face because I've lived them. My education and experience positioned me to have a meaningful, long-term impact on Oakdale's development. I understood both... I understand both spreadsheets and the kitchen table struggles. I know how to build systems that work for everyone. My vision, if appointed to this seat, my priorities will focus on balanced growth, fiscal responsibility, community connection, and future planning. Preparing Oakdale for tomorrow... Well, am I allowed?
Thank you, Liz. All right, now we'll bring you back to council. So what are your thoughts on what a council member's responsibilities are?
Our responsibility is to bring the community together, to highlight areas of concern, and to drive change in a positive and uplifting way. It's to bring resilience in a way that can bring change that is understandable from a long-term perspective. It is to look at issues that we're seeing within the community and breaking them down into palatable ways of managing them and executing accordingly while being fiscally responsible and while understanding where the future of not only Oakdale, but the Central Valley is going. We have a lot of competitors in our area that are trying to take citizens' tax dollars and it's our responsibility as the council to guide the city in the right direction to make sure we're making the right decisions.
Thank you, Liz. All right, councilmember Gilbert?
Please tell me what you know about the city's budget. Do you know what the current general reserve level is? And what do you think is a good reserve level the city should maintain?
I believe the current level is at 43% or 47%. I got that number mixed up a little bit. I think that is actually fairly strong for a town like ours, considering we are relatively small. But I do feel like we need to be smart in bringing more tax dollars to Oakdale. We need to find a resolution for, I'm not going to say it, but I am going to say it, the Kmart building. We need to look at alternative ideas to attract people to Oakdale. It doesn't necessarily need to be a store. It could be an experience like we have with the skating rink. It could be with just having a community culture of including people for something as simple as, you know, the wine and cheese or the chocolate festival or things like that. Just ways to attract folks to the Oakdale environment so they can see what we're like and why we are here.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettering?
Can you please describe your community service activities?
Sure. So I'm a little bit unique, I'll be honest. I don't necessarily take official titles in a lot of things that I do, but I do leaf Dutch flowers. I actually doorbell ditch a lot of flowers within Bridal Ridge and I've taken over the Bridal Ridge Trail and I grow flowers on the trail and I hand them out to the community just as my way of saying thank you for being amazing. I also do, with some of my best friends, every Halloween, we dress up as blown-up unicorns and I've done it with several of our other events that we have with soccer club and softball, where we dress up as unicorns and we dance around with the little kids and we get to know them. I've also done a lot of mentoring with just the youth within our organization... Or within our, sorry, within our community to see what I can do based off of my education and the skills level that I have. I have some female executive leadership certifications that I've worked with members within the community to see how I can optimize and mentor them to get further along in their career, just as I've had mentors in mine to get me further along in mine.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Patassie?
Do you have any relationship or business with any sitting council members? If so, would that relationship influence your vote if chosen?
I have friendships. I have folks that I've met. I don't have any relationships or anything of that sort. I'm not married to anybody. I don't live with anybody. I don't have any close best friends that are on the council. You guys are fellow citizens to me and kindness is across the board. I think everybody here is great humans. That's all that matters to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you would like to add?
I'm just honored to be able to take this opportunity to get to meet with you guys and thank you for giving me the opportunity to meet with you guys today.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, I want to thank everyone for applying for this position. Seven people, that's a lot. I've been on here since 2014 and have seen a lot of things, a lot of things. So it's a big deal to have seven people come forward. So thank you. At this time, we're going to have a discussion and then hopefully we'll make a motion. So Mr. Patassie, would you like to start the discussion?
With us or are we going back there?
No, with us here. Would you like to start it?
No, I'll start.
All right. All right.
I'm never one to say no to a microphone. Dang is the only word that I have. The amount of experience that was at that podium, incredible. I mean, I want to say I'm done. Somebody could take my spot. The amount of experience, the amount of dedication to this community and so many different walks of life. There were not two people here with similar experiences or similar life experiences. Just like I think all four of us up here right now are so different. I didn't see anybody at that podium who is similar to any of the four of us, which is a good thing. The level of government knowledge, private knowledge, business knowledge, leadership, I was not expecting that tonight. I don't know what I was expecting, but that's not what I was expecting. I got asked to put my name in the hat several years ago when there was an opening. I chose not to. And I think there was one or two people that did. And then I chose to go about it in a different way through a campaign and that kind of stuff. It's dedication and seeing people from our community, that many, who were willing to put forth the time, even though it could be for a short period of months, is amazing to see and I think that goes to the nature of this community. So that's really all I got and I'm assuming everyone's going to go and then after that we'll...
Yeah. Would you like to go next?
I was very worried that no one would apply for this position because it has happened before and I'm very eager to see that seven of you have taken the opportunity to turn in your application. It is very nerve-wracking to be up in the spotlight answering these questions. I have done a city council forum. I hate the city council forum. So I really appreciate you each taking your time. And I'm actually very impressed that you do know... Most of you didn't know what our budget was and how it does work because that's the biggest thing that we deal with as a city council member. So thank you for taking in your time and I believe that the four of us, we can come to some agreement with the vote of who we think is the most qualified candidate and thank you for wanting to step up for your community because a lot of people don't want to step up for their communities and thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Patassie?
Okay, now I'm ready.
You ready now?
I needed a moment to collect my thoughts and if... I'm a huge baseball fan, but what was going through my head is like the old Harry Carey, holy cows, like the amount of people that submitted your guys' resumes and how well-spoken everybody was. Paola did a great job. Rajit, great job. John, very good job. Mary, my heart rate's going high because I'm just really impressed by everybody. Ashley, great job. Mr. Murdock, great job. And Elizabeth, great job. Thank you for putting in your guys' resumes and time. And I would encourage whoever is not chosen tonight, you know, there will be elections coming up again soon. I think you're all very worthy of submitting again and taking the time because each attribute that you guys bring to the table, and not just a single one, but all of them that you guys listed tonight and as many as I could jot down while you guys were talking are all very vital to our community and its future. So I appreciate every one of you and this is a tough decision and I don't like that right now. But, you know, I appreciate all of you and thank you.
All right, well, thank you guys for that. So the seat that we need to fill tonight, I really believe has to have somebody with a lot of experience. I really believe that with all my heart and soul. It's a big seat to fill and I do appreciate everybody coming up to the mic. I mean, everybody has their own special highlights, that's for sure. And I met a few of you just recently, actually. I'm sure all of us have seen each other every now and then around town. But, yeah, great job, everyone. So with that, does anybody want to make a motion?
I motion to fill the vacant seat with Richard Murdock.
We have a first?
Second.
First and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
Councilmember Patassie?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this item passes 4-0. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations, Rich. All right, so with that, you're with me here? Okay, so now we will have the Deputy City Clerk Anderson administer the oath of office.
All right, and then just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
I.
State your name.
Rich Murdock.
We'll start over. Okay. I state your name.
I, Rich Murdock.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and... That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And if you want to go ahead and have a seat with the dice?
All right, so Rich, go ahead and take a seat here. I do want to, once again, thank everybody for putting their name in the hat. I know this is a big deal, a really, really big deal. And like councilmember Patassie said, elections will be coming up. And to have seven people really step up to the mic to put themselves out there. We've been there, we know, we know how tough it is. So thank you for putting your time and effort into this, really, you're all great. At this time, Colleen, roll call.
All right. Councilmember Murdock?
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Patassie?
Here.
Councilmember Kettering?
Here.
And Mayor Barrios.
Here, please note, all five of us are present. Thank you, everyone. Next regular council meeting will be Monday, November seventeenth at six thirty PM, and I hope to see you all here. Have a great few weeks. Have a great week.